Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, August 8th at 6:30. Please stand for our invocation and remain standing afterwards for a moment of silence.
Thank you, Father, for bringing us all here today. Thank you for who you are. Help us to follow you. Help the council to be wise in their decisions, to help guide us in this town. Lord, we are thankful for everything that you've done so far with this town, with our new chief, with our council. And, Lord, just continue to bless this town. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Ward, would you lead us in the pledge tonight, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk Treasure, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Councilwoman Neal?
Here.
Councilman Hardaway?
Here.
Councilman Minchuck?
Here.
Councilwoman Uzalak?
Here.
Councilman Pettit?
Here.
Councilman White?
Here.
And Councilman Bella?
Here.
All seven present.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. We have a swearing in of a new police officer tonight, Officer Denise Marie Sweeney. Zanny, I'm sorry. Zany, thank you. Please rise and come up here to the front. Madam Clerk Treasure will swear you in, and Chief Newses, please join them, and the police commissioners. Right here. I'm so sorry. And there on the table-
Any family members can come this way if you want to take pictures? Are you a family member? You keep looking around?
Yes, welcome up here to take-
Come this way, take the pictures. Stand, you can stand over here.
I'm venueing.
Okay.
All right. Can you raise your right hand? Repeat after me. I, Denise Marie Zany-
I, Denise Marie Zany-
solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution-
That I, that I will support the Constitution. Solemnly swear to support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America-
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully-
And that I will faithfully-
Oh.
Impartially-
Impartially.
And honestly discharge my duties-
And honestly discharge my duties.
As a police officer of the Maryville Police Department.
As a police officer of the Maryville Police Department.
And the town of Maryville, Indiana.
And the town of Maryville, Indiana.
According to the law-
According to the law.
And the best of my skill-
And the best of my skill.
And ability-
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Chief, tell us about Officer Zany.
Just to give everybody a quick, a little bit of info behind or background on Officer Zany. She's been an officer for quite a few years. She's got a lot of experience under her belt. And we were actually happy to pick her up because one of her special things and her favorites is to do traffic. And that's something that everybody keeps asking about, right? So here's a solution. I'm very happy and very thankful that you joined our team. Welcome aboard.
Thank you for having me.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And Chief, how soon can we see her out on patrol?
She's currently out there now doing her FTO, her field training. So depending on how quick she picks up on the geography and whatnot, she should be out pretty soon.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on tonight, we have a revised license agreement between the town of Maryville and Milestone. I'll call on Attorney Svetnov to give us a synopsis of this.
Yes, President Bella, we were contacted by Milestone, who is the paver provider for our roadways, has been the paver provider in our roadways for, since, I think, 2016 at least, and has held pricing consistent. We were contacted by them. We own a location of land off of Whitcomb, correct?
No, 89th and Randolph.
89th and Randolph.
Off of Randolph.
Off of Randolph. And this site's called, it's basically called a pit. Basically, what we do is we throw trash debris and so on in the pit. In this case, we're going to let Milestone lease out a license agreement for a year regarding this pit area where they're going to throw in clean debris that's going to be disposed in the pit at the tone of $50 a load. They will keep track of the load and then provide us the funds on a monthly basis. I've reviewed the contract with their council. I've reviewed the contract with our town council and feel it's proper order and form. And at this, at this meeting, it should be entered into by the council itself.
Anything to add, Steve?
Just, just real quick, the, the pit that we're referring to, it's a site that the town owns. It's already monitored by IDEM. It's already permitted. We go through audits every year with them to ensure that it's a clean fill site, and, and those will continue. So it, it's just, it's just strictly for clean fill. And again, it's, it's permitted by IDEM and monitored.
Thank you, Steve.
Motion to approve, Mr. President, for discussion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit with a second by Mr. Hardaway for approval. Open for discussion.
Obviously, I've gotten calls on this. I've talked to Steve about this already. Chief, like to get together with you and Steve and kind of monitor what's happening at 98th and Randolph. Initially, they had put up a stop sign. I got several calls as to why is the stop sign going up. I did get a call from the property owner on 89th, the old Sullivan Farm, that they bought from Mrs. Sullivan. They're concerned. So I'm going to go ahead and vote in favor of this, Steve. But again, we're going to need to sit down, kind of look at traffic, trucks going down Randolph. Randolph has been repaved. 89th is a dirt road, I believe, right, Steve?
Gravel, yes.
Gravel road. As Steve alluded to, it's all clean fill. This is where we take all of our leaves during leaf collection and create mulch out there. And this butt's up against the Lake County Water Park. So I just want to make sure the residents out there are comfortable with the traffic. I think $50 a load is a revenue generator. So I will support this.
Anyone else have a comment?
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yes, I, as I read this the other day, being environmental, first I want to know, did IDEM give them a permit? Because if we, if we're looking at our compost facility, that's not part of the compost facility, which we do have a permit for.
Yeah, no, it won't, Leonard, it won't be, Councilman White, we won't be, won't be dumping the debris down by the compost site. That's a separate, that's a separate area. The fill site is up top.
Sure.
Where, where we bring, you know, branches and, and, you know, things like that, clean fill of our own. So that's where they'll be. And IDEM monitors the whole, the entire site.
Yeah, I just wanted to, IDEM approval of them doing that? Or do we even need approval from IDEM?
We, we don't need approval from IDEM for the agreement. We're, we're already permitted as a clean site. So it doesn't-
They already monitor the site.
Yeah, they already monitor the site. We get audited, we get audited twice a year by IDEM.
Oh, yeah, but it's for the compost site. But here's, here's what I wanted to say basically as well is that, I seen when you say clean fill, I'm not used to, but the license agreement said that they also want to have asphalt. Asphalt is definitely petroleum-based. And that's where my concern to come, if, you know, there's going to be some kind of, some type of contamination factor going on, and how much of that asphalt is in there. So unless somebody can tell me that there's no, there's not going to be an impact, then that's something that I think I need to look into a little longer from the Environmental Affairs Chairman. That's it.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. A roll call vote on this, Joe, or?
Yes.
A roll call. Madam Clerk Treasure, please.
Councilwoman Neal?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Uzalak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman White?
No.
And Councilman Bella?
Aye.
Six in favor, one no.
Six to one, and motion carries. Thank you. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda. We have the accounts payable voucher approval for August 8th, as well as the approval of the town council meeting minutes for July 25th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uzalak for approval of the consent agenda as submitted. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Moving on tonight to the standing and special committee reports. Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Trista, where are we at on scheduling the budget hearing?
I met with interim town manager, Mr. King, last week briefly. We discussed putting the schedule together, and I just need to get him a call back and get the times assigned. I believe you discussed starting at 4:30 next week, Monday and Tuesday?
Yes.
And as last year, our plan was again about 20 minutes or so, maybe 30 for a larger department for time slots for that initial first conversation.
Okay, but every department has submitted something to you so far?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I was just running through the list quickly in my head. Yes, they have.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. Later on, on second reading, we have the ordinance that Joe put together upon the recommendation of the, of the chief on the illegal activities for nuisances. So hopefully that will gain a favorable, and that can go into effect, right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Street Department, Mr. Minchuck.
Only thing I have at this time is, you know, it's August, so fall's approaching. Keep an eye out for the fall newsletter. I'm sure we'll have the leaf pickup schedule in there. So make sure you follow that schedule and have your leaves ready during that time. They come by twice. Steve?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's the leaves.
Like an early pickup and a late pickup. Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
That's all, sir.
Elections, public relations, and town beautification, Mr. Pettit.
No report, Mr. President.
Environmental affairs, Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President. I just wanted to briefly talk about the uptick in a new Corona variant out there. From what I understand, it's called E-55, I believe. This particular variant is not as aggressive as the initial, but they're starting to see an uptick in hospitalizations. When I say they, I'm talking about the CDC, not specifically here. But overall, we have something that may be coming really soon here. So I haven't had any data from the CDC for what's going on in terms of how that affects us here in Maryville, but our numbers are still as consistent as being low. That's it.
Thank you. Personnel policy and employee benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hey, Chaz, like to stick around and see Councilman Bella and me after the meeting. That's all I have.
Public safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Nothing at this time.
Economic development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to, I guess in my capacity as redevelopment commission president, with Councilwoman Uzalak and your permission, I'd like to call a joint workshop meeting for September 5th, I believe it is, the Tuesday after Labor Day at 5 o'clock, a joint meeting of the Maryville Plan Commission, Redevelopment Commission, and Town Council. Today at lunch, Steve and I heard a presentation from Butler Fairman and Seifert. As you may recall, the town of Maryville was awarded some NERC money, two and three point eight million dollars for some roundabouts or traffic mitigation at US 30 in Mississippi. And Butler Fairman has come up with several alternatives. I told him I needed input from my colleagues. This is not a sole decision as to how we handle the traffic that's taking place basically between US 30 and 73rd Avenue. So at this time, I'd like to call that workshop for 5 o'clock on Tuesday. I think it's the 5th. I'm not sure what Tuesday that is.
That is correct, September 5th.
September 5th at 5 o'clock. Sorry about that, y'all. That's all, Mr. President.
I have no objection, Mr. Pettit. Moving on to Parks and Recreations, Mrs. Uzalak.
Thank you. The parks are in complete order. The bike trail has been cleaned. In the meantime, I have gotten a call from a Mrs. Wiltshire, Ivy. She's got several companies along with her neighbors. She lives close to the Rosenbaum Park. That debris has never been cleaned up. She's got wires hanging in her yard from NIPSCO. All of the construction material is still around there. It's in real bad shape. I went out to check it too after her phone call. And if all the council members, if they would read her email, it should be in your packet, which I'm sure. So I think we have to put a step forward and try to do something about all this. There's several blocks of people complaining. And this construction company, they had to move a lot of the equipment out of the park, which they had parked there, with chemicals. And we have a lot of children going in that park playing. As a matter of fact, during the summer, we do have birthday parties there. So right now, I do not see Mr. Matt Lake here. I don't know what his response is to all of this. But I think we have to put a step forward, look into all of this. Okay, Mr. President?
Yes, I did talk to Matt. He couldn't be here. He's actually on a vacation day today, but he did go and talk to Ivy. He was there at the site. He sent me a fresh picture. And just about everything you just quoted has been taken care of as of today.
Oh, yes, the debris, the debris from NIPSCO been picked up-
It has. The wires are gone, and they're actually paving the road tomorrow.
Because she had to park her car a block away in the dark, no street light.
Right. But this is a bigger question of how, how do we allow utilities to come in? And we've had more utility work this year than I've ever seen in 50 years in town.
Me too.
You know, between NIPSCO and Commonwealth Edison and all the new poles and all the new wires, they're digging up all through Sedona. There's, there's wires all over the place in there, and trucks, and I get calls almost daily about it. So it's a bigger question as far as how do we work with contractors, Sheila and Steve, and allow them to come into our town? And how do we hold them accountable, Joe, legal question, to do work in the town and then restore the yards and the parkways to what they were before they came?
Well, I, I think what we need to do is try to create a pipeline of communication with NIPSCO. I was just talking to Councilman Pettit on the way in tonight, and we're going to sit down with one of their high-level representatives-
Great.
On talking about, you know, when they cut down the trees and all the debris that was left from, from their third-party contractors.
Yeah.
The wires that were left, the equipment that was left. So I think if we do that and we get, and we communicate with upper-level management, then I think that's going to create some type of, hopefully synergy to get this problem solved. If not, you know, what we may have to do is call in third-party contractors of our own, come out, clean that stuff up, and then hand NIPSCO the bills and make a demand on them to pay it. If they don't pay it, you sue them. Now, good luck suing NIPSCO. But at the end of the day, we, we have to do something because we don't take a proactive approach. You know, our citizens pay the price.
And I told Joe on the, on the way in, I had this circumstance in April and May. It was coincidentally kind of after the tornado, but all up and down 78th Avenue in Chapel Manor, house after house after house had debris in the front yard. I talked to Steve about this, didn't I?
Yeah.
I will applaud NIPSCO, though. I did have one resident in Chapel Manor that had a completely rotted-out utility pole. And they got in there, and they got those fixed over by St. Joan of Arc Church, all the way down the back easement there, Steve, along 78th Avenue. So they, they will do that. We've had a fairly good relationship with Alexias Barber. And I think between her and Rick Kolinsky, I think Sheila and Steve and I, we can reach out and figure out what's going on in town.
Well, I, I agree with Joe. I think it's not necessarily the utility, it's the subcontractors they hire-
It's subcontractor, right.
Who may not have the same connection to the town like NIPSCO does with us, or the other utility.
They've gone in, Mr. President, they've, in, in certain instances, years ago in Chapel Manor, they went in and butchered, just whacked off the tops of pine trees because they were getting too close to the power lines. And no shaping, no topping, no nothing like that.
Right.
So it's, it's a subcontractor.
Two, according to Ms. Wiltshire, they came in, started a project, left and was not back for two weeks. All the equipment is sitting there. Streets and driveways are torn up, and these people have suffered a lot. Now, we're going through in the fourth ward, Whitcomb Street, with American Water, a new water main being put in.
Right.
We have several streets that are torn up. I get calls every day. I try to explain it. I just hope that they hurry and complete the project. I think they should have some type of a time limit on all of this when they start. I mean, this could be going on all summer and half the winter, for all I know.
Sure.
In Ward 3, our biggest problem is American Water. We have, of course, lines, the pipeline that runs through Turkey Creek is pretty old, and we get a lot of ruptures in Turkey Creek. They'll come out, they'll make the repair, dig up the street and everything, but of course, it leaves damage to people's lawns. And I'm like, yeah, we'll be back to fix it, we'll be back to fix it. I mean, I've checked on and off every other month, or over a year sometimes, and they're like, yeah, 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 we'll get to it. They never do. So American Water's a big one for us. And then also with NIPSCO in our ward, a lot of the NIPSCO poles are older, so they need to replace them. So we get brand-new poles, but they leave the old ones standing, and they're tilting and teetering, and, you know, we need to get those removed as well. So that's a minor, our biggest problem.
Yes, sir.
I think one of the things that we're going to stress to NIPSCO when we sit down with them is, we consider the third-party contractors extensions of use.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yep. Mr. President, I have one other thing under Mrs. Uzalak's committee, if I could.
Wait one second. I want to ask Steve anything else to add about the, that location? Do you familiar with what Matt did today?
Yeah, I'm familiar with, with what he did. And there was, again, there was a utility delay. But a lot, you know, a lot of things, you know, Matt and I had this conversation today. And it's follow-up on our end, too. You know, the contractors, you know, demobilized from the project. A lot of times, it's a maintenance issue, maintaining the gravel and the roadways and stuff until we get done. And Matt and I had a long conversation about that today. It's not only with his stormwater project, but, you know, a lot of projects that we have. It's just follow-up, follow-up, follow-up that we continually do.
Well, that seems to be the problem right now, Steve.
Mm-hmm.
Follow-up, 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 call after call.
All, all the time.
All of us on top of this and trying to get the situation straightened out. So I hope we get some type of conclusion, Mr. President. And maybe we could work on it, like Sean has suggested with NIPSCO, or maybe do some type of a resolution when you get in there to do a job. You should have maybe one month, two months. We are into months of this, and these people could not even park their cars in their driveway. They were walking. It was a bad area. There were small chi, I mean, a good area with a bad situation. And there's children there. And I don't know. I just hope we come to some type of conclusion.
Sure. Mr. Pettit?
Actually, it was under my other committee, Mr. President, now that I realize it. One of my constituents, as I walked in, showed me a photo. Torrance, can we look at, or Steve, can we look at the gazebo out here in the parking lot? Apparently, we have a big chunk of the roof. Is that right, Craig?
Okay.
Craig showed me a picture of our gazebo missing a piece of the roof. So if we could look into that, I would appreciate it.
And I do believe Torrance had fixed the roof at Rosenbaum Park. Correct, Torrance?
Yes.
We had a problem there. And what about the floor? The floor has been replaced. Were they cut out a section of the floor?
I believe it has. I'll have to double-check, though.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Well, that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Uzalak. Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
I'd like to ask, tell Mr. Hardaway, of course, you know, you and I and Joe have talked about some situations down there at 61st and at the plaza down there. Obviously, they sold the place and then give us the courtesy of telling us that they sold it. However, I understand that the owner, David Israel, still wants to keep the Pancake House. No problem with that. I'm, I'm just saying, how long do we let it be empty? And does that fall under the blight committee?
Not, not as long as they maintain to keep grass cut and no windows are broken though. So there's nothing that we can do about that.
Well, yes, it's going on three years. I don't know if we need to amend our, our ordinance for that because if we don't put a time limit on some of these buildings, they're going to stay empty a long time. And this is just stuff that I heard, actually, through people. Didn't hear that through Mr. Israel. However, they sold the property. They didn't even tell me they sold the properties. I had a new property on there saying, start paying me instead of Mr. Israel.
Well, I've been in communication with them, I know.
Yes, yeah. So I, I would like, though, since Mr. Israel got rid of all the other problems he had there by selling the property, we need to know what he's going to do with his property there real soon.
Maybe reach out to Mr. Anderson and see if we can start a dialogue.
Well, Sheila, if you could do me a favor tomorrow, do research on the plaza. Make sure that the Pancake House is still in Mr. Israel's name, and it's a separate key number.
Yes.
Get, call with me tomorrow, and then we'll go from there with-
Okay.
-dealing with Mr. Israel.
Okay.
And the new orders.
Okay, thank you, Mrs.
Thank you.
One, Steve, while we're talking about that building, they've got gang graffiti on the side of it, on the east side of the building. Maybe get somebody to go down there and paint it. It's a small portion that's on the southeast side.
Additionally, they have gang graffiti over here on US 30, on one of those containers that are not supposed to be around any longer, because our ordinance said we don't have to have, we can't have containers.
Which, which container?
It's a container right next to that, almost similar to, adjacent to Potilios.
Yes, we've been trying to find out who owns that.
Yes.
It is just sitting out there.
Yes.
No one wants to take, take, no one wants to take ownership of it.
In the meantime, I was just saying additionally with gang graffiti, this is one of the reasons I wanted Mickey here, so I could tell those things. Now, I probably could tell Costa about it. So now I think that he should hear it from Richard. We do need, because last time I painted it myself. I'm not painting it anymore. That's not what I'm supposed to do. But we do need to get that took care of. Thank you.
Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Torrance, got a lot of stuff going on at the center again.
Yes, thank you. Apologize for not being here on our last meeting. I wanted to take this time real quick to congratulate the Employee of the Month, Jason Anderson, again. An amazing employee. Does a great job. We hosted Chicago Sky Guard and WNBA Dana Evans Youth Basketball Camp on yesterday. The camp had over 100 youth register and participate. Not only was there strong local representation, but the camp also had participants from Illinois and Michigan. A special thank you to the Evans family and the Jordan brand for allowing us the opportunity to host the camp. Also want to have a special thank you to Officer Nick Burzac, Ian Foltz, Matt Reynolds, and Kawada Osborne for their efforts and great work with security on yesterday. Also want to thank Kelly Sofield-Kishin for the meal, our, our great staff at the community center, and a thank you again to the family of Darius Garland, who provided us a blueprint last summer on how to host events such as this one. Boys and Girls Club Conference will be held at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center Wednesday and Thursday of this week, the 8th and the 9th. Ms. Ariana Francis is the new club director for the Maryville Boys Club, Boys and Girls Club for the 2023, 2024 school year. Kwanis Club is also dedicating the bench to Curtis Park. Want to do that dedication tomorrow morning at 10:30 a.m. The 219 Ride-In Wranglers, in partnership with the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, presents August 19th Glow Night at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, starting at 8 p.m. Food trucks, there'll be trophies given to the best glow-in Jeep, truck, slingshot, deepest crew trophy, best sounds in slingshot, best sounds in Jeep, August 26th. It will also be a cruise night at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, 5 p.m. Food trucks and vendors, muscle cars, classic cars, motorcycles, bring your lawn chairs.
All right. Have they started, Jeff, to you, have they started Pop Warner practice yet?
Soon. It should be like, oh, they have started already?
Okay. Okay, they have started. Okay, then we need to, Leonard, you and Jeff and I, we need to find a Thursday that we can get together. Normally, we've met on the 4th Thursday of the month. We probably need to talk some physical improvements, Steve, that we need to continue to work on, that north parking lot, Jeff, storage and protection on that fence. So, after the meeting, guys, I'll try and pin both of you down and get a Thursday. We can schedule it, Torrance, up at your place, okay? Like, 4:30?
Which Thursday?
Well, it's up to you guys. You guys let me know. Your work schedule, Jeff, is?
17 through the 24th, either one.
Okay.
What's good for you, Leonard?
Probably the 24th, because I have a Soloway's District, they probably going to finally meet now. Soloway's District meeting on the 17th.
All right, let's make it official, Mr. President. 24th at 4:30 at the Dean and Barbara White, if you can get us a room, Torrance, okay?
And one more thing, too, circling back to parks, somewhere along the line, I'd like to have a conversation with how we reserve our parks out to the public. We just have some concerns in making sure we know what is going on at our parks, who's there, so we can make sure, like, the mowing is taken care of, but also trying to keep track and cut down on the number of violence and things that goes on at the parks in terms of our trash, heavy trash days. We got Labor Day coming up here real soon.
Okay.
Illegal fireworks, that type of thing. So, we want to touch on that one in the meetings.
All right, and I want to get with you after the meeting. I texted you, and I'm not sure I have the right number, and I need to talk to you about Ignite and Epic, okay? Volleyball clubs.
Okay.
All right. That's all, Mr. President.
Also, let's get the, I think we should have Steve come to that meeting, and then also have, uh-
Andrew?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
And whoever come from that meeting, so they can present their estimate, kind of explain it.
Physical stuff, yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll get with Steve ahead of time and try to get those numbers and see where we go right, so.
Okay. Now, that's all, Mr. President.
Sorry, Steve.
Thank you.
Moving on to special projects, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quickly, I'd just like to thank everyone that participated in the National Night Out last week. We had a great time, great music. The churches came out, as usual, and provided a lot of food, and so I'd just like to thank everybody for that. And I think that's all we got, Mr. President.
Thank you. Department and Commission reports, Lake County Soloway's Management District, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a report this time. I don't have a report this time, but we are meeting on the 17th of August, because according to the last meeting we were supposed to have, it wasn't quorum, so now we're going to meet on the 17th. Also, want to apologize for my theme music coming on. That was a Soloway's District theme music, and I got out there before I did, so, thank you. That's it.
NERC, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Moving on to Fire Territory Board, Mr. Minchuck and Mrs. Neal.
We meet this Thursday at 3:30.
Very good. Moving on to department reports, anything else to add? Torrance, on the parks?
No.
Police Chief Nusis.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to start off by saying, as Councilman Hardaway, saying thank you to everybody that came out for the National Night Out. That was great to see the faces of the community. Gives us a chance to kind of talk with everybody and get an understanding of who everybody is, and I thought it was a great thing. Also, we had our job fair. That was an excellent thing as well. We got a couple potential candidates for police officers, so pretty happy to announce that as well. Back to the police work portion of it. Last meeting, we discussed about gathering information from the speed signs and accident reports. We have almost concluded our investigation on the accidents that were caused by excessive speed. We did not want to follow up with any type of speed reports just yet because we didn't want to bias reports. So, Steve, I'll be seeing you soon to get the actual reports regarding the speeds, so we can kind of put them all together. In addition to that, we're trying to take steps in modern-day policing or smart policing. We realize that we do have a couple issues that we need to take care of, so we want to work smart and not hard. And in that, we're collecting more data. We just had a meeting with the FBI Grit, which stands for the Gang Response Investigations Team, and we were discussing what can we do to try and kind of put a, I guess, enough out the crime that we've been having. Nothing serious, but it is enough to where it's getting the attention of some people. So, we want to keep Maryville the safe place that it is for everybody. I live here. We all live here. It's very important to me that we do that. So, that's going to be something that we're going to be working on. Wanted to make an announcement. Last night, we had a incident where our officers went and served a warrant for, it was a felony warrant, for a violent crime against a person. The suspect fled as we tried to apprehend him, and we were able to successfully apprehend him via the use of our, one of our new canines. So, that was a great thing for us. Everybody was in custody. Nobody got hurt. It's, it was, it was a good ending. Last thing I want to talk about is the containers that you were talking about, Councilman White. Those have been on my list. We've been trying to get everybody that's, that we do see. I've been having code enforcement going out there. We have one area that we've been writing tickets to daily now. So, this is one of those things that if anybody does see these containers, please feel free to notify us so we can address them accordingly. What we're doing is we're initially giving them a warning. If they've never had a warning before, we give them a certain amount of time, and if they're not removed by a certain amount of time, we're starting to ticket them. That's all.
Can we remove them, Chief?
Excuse me?
I say, well, if they don't respond to the tickets, Mr. President?
We, we can't remove them because they're on private property, and they are private property, so we would get ourselves in hot water if we did that, but we can continue to find them.
Thank you. Mr. President, are you through, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. President, can I just go back to stormwater management, even though I know Matt's not here? I did talk to Matt earlier today. We had the citizen come in last week talking about Barclay Village, the pond.
Right.
And I don't know if he gave you any to add on it.
I got the report. Did you get the report?
Yes, yes. So, of course, they found the person that owns the property. They're going to cut the weeds and the overgrown vegetation there, and they also are looking for some individuals to, maybe contracts with Cleanfield, to kind of take care of those slopes, so people won't be able to slide down those. And they're also going to put up some signs saying, please do not walk into this area here, because you might fall into the water. So, I just meant to initially say that, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shine, anything to add from planning and building? I know you have some petitions tonight.
I do. Just one thing that I would like for everyone to know, that Chief Nusis and myself have met with the prospective or proposed owners of the Hickory Ridge complex. And the reason why I'm mentioning this is because we are going to issue a permit to J and B Restoration to remove the brick from the two buildings. They have sent a structural engineer out there to assess the structure of the building. However, it cannot be properly assessed until the bricks are moved away from the building. So, they will come in, and I just, well, because people are going to see them out there. They're going to secure the area all the way around the building. They're going to move the, the bricks. We have asked them, Chief Nusis and ourselves, has asked them when they come to be ready to do the work, because many time contractors come out on the job, and they start, and then they go someplace else. We have asked them to be ready to do the work when they come. They cannot assess those buildings. And this is being done, this is part of what the proposed owners are asking the owners to do before they take on the Hickory Ridge LLC. We are being very, I guess, Chief, we could say, we are being very stern with them, because we are certainly concerned about the safety of the people who still live there. There are approximately 150 residents that lives in those buildings, well, families, I should say, that lives in those buildings. And they've come in, and they have a plan once they take ownership of the building, on how they're going to move those people to the newly remodeled areas, the newly remodeled buildings, I should say. But all of this has to be done, and I just wanted to really make mention of it, because we'll start to get phone calls, because you will see action out there. I think that that's it. If you have any questions, please call Chief Nusis. No.
But, but I do-
No, you can call either Chief Nusis or myself, or we have the, the fire chief and the fire inspector. We're all abreast of what's, what's going on, and we're watching it very closely.
Well, I'm going to call both you and Chief here. Specifically, I just want to update, or if you even have an update, about the mole. Have they remediated that mole over there yet?
So, what, what the owners are going to do is, they don't, the new owners, they don't own the building yet, but they have a plan. Their plan is to, Chief, if I get off track, help me.
Sure.
Their plan is to upgrade the buildings that are empty, new carpet, new toilets, new countertops, new everything, and move the families from the buildings that are out there into those buildings. They're going to meet with the family, with the 150 residents each. They're not going to meet with them all together. They're going to meet with each 100, with each tenant separately, to discuss what they're going to do once they take ownership. Now, once again, as we talked about earlier in the other, the projects that we have going on, people tell us one thing. We have to monitor this very closely, because they tell us one thing, and then if we're not watching, they'll do something different. But this is what we were told. But bear in mind that they do not own the building yet. They do not own the property yet. They are still trying to go through all what they have to do to own it and to get a, I have the letter from the, from the structural engineer about how they went and looked at the buildings, but they cannot assess it with the buildings. They need to look at everything about this, on the structure of the building, and they cannot assess it with the brick falling away like that. I tried to do my best job to explain that. I really did.
It was fine.
Write that down. Write that down.
I think that to, you know, so people don't start calling, which, like you said, they will, can we require the current owners to at least put on a flyer to the residents who live there, as far as what's going on?
Oh, that's, they're going to do that, because it's going to be-
Just communications?
Yeah, they're going to do that.
Well, tell them, when they communicate to the residents, we want to be copied on it.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to see what they're saying.
Because we want to know the communication lines and how, how often they're communicating with those residents.
Okay.
Because we'll receive the WOAG then, if they don't communicate.
And Sheila, that depends upon all these repairs going to be done and corrected. They would have to own the building before they would start putting their money into it.
Yeah.
So, what is, here's, here we go again. What is the time limit?
This assessment is being done by the present owners. This is part of-
So, is the present owner going to pay for the repairs until it's sold, or the new owners coming in, are they going to?
So, we don't know that. All we, all we know is, what I told you, is that the present owners, which is the Friedman Real Estate Group, are paying to have this assessment done before the new owners take over. So, we don't know who's paying for what.
Actually, it's in limbo, then. Who's paying for it, when it will be done, and it's another time element.
Well, here's the thing, too, just from the cheap seats where I'm sitting, somebody better be doing the mold remediation in there.
Right.
I don't care if it's Friedman. I don't care if it's Kukufren and Ollie. But, I mean, that's a dangerous situation.
It is.
Sure is.
And we can't wait till they get into a new apartment.
Right.
If they're still on the building.
Well, but the problem is, it's a contingency sale.
Sure, sure.
Upon the due diligence and inspection of the building. So, we're sitting here in a dead zone, right?
So, so here's what I need you to do, Chief, to contact the Lake County Health Department and ask them the status of that mold remediation in there.
The, the, are you asking for the, the mole where the people live at now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, any and all, mole.
Or, yeah. Because they're, they're, the reason why I ask is because there are buildings out there that are empty.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, if there's buildings that are empty, if they abut another building-
Right.
And mold climbs.
And mold can creep on over to another unit.
Yep.
I will get that, all that information. I will try my best.
Thank you, Sheila.
The chief and I.
Oh, that's-
I don't want to be in this by myself.
Thank you. That's, I don't have any more questions.
Moving on. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you, Sheila.
Steve, can you give us a report, please, from a street department perspective and town manager's office?
So, the street department, well, first of all, the job fair, hats off to the staff that put that together, Linda, Brenda. We had 75 vendors, so we had to line out the door before we even opened. It was another phenomenal event put on by the town. So, they deserve all the credit for that. They did a great job. Street department, we just continue with our summer operations. We're doing some crack sealing, mowing town-owned properties, keeping everything maintained. We're working on that. We do have our, our branch pickup is, is, again, ongoing. We have a crew running around all over town, picking up branches all summer. So, that's what we're doing there. Okay. So, as far as the town manager's office, we've been busy. We're in the process of getting some appraisals for some property here around Town Hall, and hopefully complete, you know, purchases of the, of the property, if we can, to, to do our town center, as were proposed. We did get, we did get some planning money from NERC for this project, about $250,000 for the planning of the new town center. Other than that, we're just working every day to keep the, keep the town manager's office moving and help the residents and anybody, and anybody else any way we can.
Thank you, Steve.
Sure.
Moving on tonight to general orders. We have a first reading ordinance, ordinance 23-21. It's an ordinance authorizing the appropriations in the 2023 budget.
So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, a second by Mrs. Uszak, for approval of ordinance 23-21 on first reading. Open for discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
The additional appropriations, where is that going to? And where is it coming from? When we say we're doing an additional appropriation, you have to take it from somewhere, and then it has to go somewhere. So, do you have any idea where?
It's not, it's not a transfer of funds?
Not a transfer. It's a wheel tax revenue.
Appropriation. We have to have an appropriation to allow us to spend the funding, as we learned earlier, too, in our meeting.
The wheel tax?
Yeah, we have a wheel tax that we generate revenue from.
Right. So, I was just saying, are we going to take money out of the wheel tax and push it somewhere else?
No, I don't think so. Tristan, you want to?
Tristan might be able to.
Mr. White, there's a, a nice balance, just over a million dollars, in the wheel tax fund right now.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. King has some projects. I forget the details of those. I'll let him fill that in. And so, needs to be able to fund the, the spending of that project, obviously, you know, the expenditure for that project.
Okay.
It was not planned for a year ago in the budget, but because there is cash available in the fund with still money left over to be a nice cash balance for reserve, then he's asking that you allow him to spend this extra money.
Steve, isn't it, the Community Crossings projects are funded out of this wheel tax fund?
That's, that's what, that's what this is for.
Fifty-fifty.
Yeah, the money's there. We just have to, we just have to move it to the right appropriations so we can get those paid. That's all it's for.
Thank you.
Does that help, Mr. White?
It helps a lot.
Any other discussion? Hearing them. Madam Chair Trezor, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Neal.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yeah.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uszak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Aye.
And Councilman Bello.
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven-zero, motion carries. Seven-zero, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on tonight to second reading ordinances. You have ordinance 23 dash 19. It's ordinance concerning real estate in the town of Maryville, which is used or permitted to be used by the owner for illegal activities and declaring the same a public nuisance. This is what Mr. Pettit was referring to earlier.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion of Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval of ordinance 23 dash 19 on second and final reading. Open for discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. White.
I'm supporting this 100% because I think this gives the police department tools and other, other departments the tools they need that we have been sorely lacking. Um, people were doing some pretty terrible things, and the owners, we don't even know if the owners live in town. So, I think this is a way to let them know that you still have property here, and your, your tenants are causing problems. So, I think this is a good, um, ordinance, and I'm supporting it 100%. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Chief, you know where to go on Ward 6, right?
I have a few.
Chief, you know where to go on Ward 6.
This is a second reading ordinance. We ask for public input. Is there any public comment on ordinance 23 dash 19? Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Neal.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yeah.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Yes.
And President Bella.
If I could vote twice for this, I would, but aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 23 dash 20. It's ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing additional appropriations in the night, in the 2023 budget. Oh, my gosh, I almost said 19-something.
So moved.
Second.
Most by Mr. Pettit and a second by Mrs. Yuzlak. This is, um... For $40,000 worth of improvements from the CCD park improvements. Again, we're just making a appropriation. Is that right, Trista?
Yes, Mr. President. Uh, each year, you may recall that the CCD fund budgeted $70,000 for park improvements specifically. That money has been used so far this year already on projects, and then a complete redo, as I understand, of the, uh, security system, camera system at the Dean Barbara White Center, the prison pavilion, and I believe one other smaller project, um, are in the process of being finished up either last week or sometime soon, I think, Mr. King, Mr. Price. This money will help fund the last of that bill.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a general question for Trista.
Mr. Pettit.
Uh, we had a discussion earlier, Trista, on a sub-allocation area out of AmeriPlux. When we do an addition, when we create an appropriation, it gets first reading, then it's got to be published, and then we can do second reading?
Right.
So, we're really looking at four weeks before the clerk treasurer can issue anything out of that fund.
For the AmeriPlux fund?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, except that, with an additional appropriation, you could suspend the rules. As long as it's published, the notice is published in time, you could do both ordinance readings at the same time if you suspended the rules.
All right. I'll talk to you after the meeting with Kelly. We need to get something fixed immediately out there, okay?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yep. Any other discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none. Any public comment on a $40,000 appropriation? Any public comment? Hearing none. Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Neal.
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yeah.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman White.
Aye.
And Councilman Bella.
Aye.
All seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Motion carries on second reading. We have no resolutions tonight. Moving on to the American Rescue Plan AP voucher, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's, uh, American Rescue Plan voucher is for $396,042. I make a motion that we approve this voucher.
Second.
I think it's amazing you can read that, read that fuzzy figure. Nice job.
I got help.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments on the motion by Mr. Hardaway? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the BZA and large gathering actions. Ms. Shine.
Yes, we have. Our first large gathering action is for the Salvatorian Fathers pilgrimage. It will be held August 13th from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The event will be called the Polynesian Pure pilgrimage. The event is a religious walk from Chicago, Illinois to Maryville, Indiana, that will conclude with a mass at, and service at the Salvatorian Fathers. A maximum of approximately 4,000 people will be in attendance. No tickets will be sold for this event. There will be 15 acres for onsite parking at the facility. There are, there will be no parking used in surrounding property owners. Portable water, um, facilities will be available in the hall, church, and picnic area. There will be 45 male and 45 female toilet facilities available. Service sanitary is responsible for the maintenance. There will be three dumpsters and 55 trash cans available for the use, and they will be maintained by homeboard disposal services. There will be no camping, over, or overnight stays, and there will be no entertainment provided at the assembly. Security will be provided by an off-duty Maryville police officers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval of the Salvatorian Fathers' large gathering permit. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Ms. Shine.
Our second large gathering permit application is from the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana, and it's their, their gathering is called the Ride the Region. Uh, the event will be held on Saturday, August 12, 23rd, from 12:00 p.m. to 12, to 2:00 p.m. This event is a fundraiser that raises funds to support hunger relief efforts. A maximum of approximately 170 people will be in attendance, which will be controlled through ticket sales. Attendees will wear wristbands that are identifiable on-site security. There will be 180 parking spaces for onsite parking at the facility. Therefore, no parking will be used from surrounding property owners. Portable water facilities will be available in the facility, and there will be six male and six female indoor toilet facilities available. Food bank staff is responsible for their maintenance. There will be one dumpster and five trash cans available for use, and it will be maintained by Total Disposal Incorporated. There will be no camping or overnight stays. Entertainment will be provided by DJ Brand. Catalyst production alcohol will be served at this event, and the owner has provided a copy of the liquor license. The site has been inspected by the fire inspector, and the security will be provided by off-duty Maryville police officers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Most by Mr. Hardaway with a second by Mr. Minchuck for approval. Sheila, our, our agenda's time-wise, it says from 10 to 5.
Did I...
Is that correct?
Wait a minute.
10 a.m. to 5 p.m.
Are you looking at the wrong one, Mr. President, I think?
12 to 2 p.m. is for the Food Bank.
Right.
So, what you're looking at is the Hindu.
No, it says, no, it says...
No, I'm not.
Says 10 a.m. to 5 p.m.
To 5.
Oh, okay, that's...
On our agenda, I'm referring to our agenda, Sheila.
He's, that's the agenda. I, um, yes.
It's 12 to 2 for sure.
It's 12 to 2.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, 5 p.m. is incorrect?
Yep.
Yes, that's, yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay. No problem.
Okay.
Any other discussion from the council?
Uh, I, I, I do have...
Mr. White.
I do have a question. Um, this particular fundraiser, is it, is it for food, for people, or?
So, the, the, uh, the Food Bank is raising money because they provide food for the Northwest Indiana Food Bank, and they're having a fundraiser so they can raise money, so they can provide...
Just for their budget.
For their budget.
No, I, I was saying that they're selling alcohol. I, I never just seen that part of them.
Well, no. So, they're having alcohol at their event for the participants that's coming to the event that's going to give money. So, if, you know, you give, you give, you give a lot of money if you have a lot of...
Right, and when you get... Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
If I can interpretate that.
Any other comments from the council? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Ms. Shine.
Yes. The last, um, large gathering permit is for the Northwest Indiana Hindu Religion Center. Um, they're having their, uh, cultural event at... This event is a food and musical festival highlighting Indian culture. It will be held on Saturday, August 18th, um, 2023, from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. 400 is the maximum number of people permitted to assemble. The site will have two portable, portable water stations inside the building, and soft drinks will be available as well. The host has hired private security and has requested off-duty Maryville police to provide security. There will be six male restrooms and six female toilet facilities available to use. The toilet facilities will be maintained by the facility custodial staff. There will be one dumpster and six trash, uh, containers on site. Total disposal will be responsible, um, for waste management. There are 200 parking spaces on site. Overflow parking will be directed to a field on the property, so there will be no parking on the surrounding properties. Entertainment will be provided by view members of the, uh, temple inside the cultural center. All musical, music will be held inside the hall, and all food vendors have Lake County, Indiana food service permits. Host has secured the Indiana Department of Homeland Security amusement and entertainment permit.
Motion, Minchuck.
Second.
So, that was a motion by Mr. Hardaway, a second by Mrs. Neal. Thank you. Open for discussion. I will say this is in my district, and they have this festival every year, and I certainly would support it, so... All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Shine.
So, our final action for tonight is going to be from, um, our sign permit, our LED sign permit. The gentleman is here from, um, you can step to the podium, sir. Um, the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana is the, um, petitioner, and they are petitioning a variance of use to allow a LED sign. Petitioner is seeking a variance of use approval from section 21 dash 189A to allow an electronic message center to be located at 6490 Broadway. The Food Bank of Northwest Indiana would like to insert a six-by-three watchfire LED electronic message, message center on an existing sign. The, the existing sign is 50 square feet, and the total signage would be 68 square feet. Petitioner would like to advertise hours of operation, time, temperature, and special announcements. Petitioner will advertise time, town events upon request. So, if you have any questions, this gentleman is a representative from the sign company that will be erecting the sign.
I have a question, Mr. President. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I, I, I'm just curious more than anything else, what type of cost is involved in those type of signs?
Uh, you mean to operate them?
To purchase them, or?
They're not inexpensive.
Okay.
Uh, but they do last a long time, and it's LED, so it doesn't cost much to operate them.
Okay. Thank you.
That's why they're having the fundraiser.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Hardaway, did you...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Most by Mr. Hardaway for approval with a second by Mrs. Neal. Any other questions or comments for, um, the petitioner? Whose district is this?
Uh, Leonard's.
Is it yours, north of the tracks?
Absolutely. Yeah. On, on the west side of, of Broadway.
Do you have a motion for us, Mr. White?
Motion to approve. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
It's been approved and second, right?
Richard and Ron.
Now, we just take the vote, correct?
We'll do that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any old business before us tonight? Nope. Hearing none. New business? I do have one, uh, discussion point, and I'll ask for a motion later. And I'm gonna talk about tonight is the traffic woes in Maryville. If you drive through Maryville, you most likely have experienced our traffic woes at various times a day. Heavy morning traffic with drivers going to work, then again around lunchtime, and again between 4:00 to 6:00. As workers get off for the day, at least that's how it used to be. Maryville traffic now seems to be constant throughout the entire day, and at times, that will, it stays that way until early evening, when there seems to be some relief. And it seems like driving habits have, as we've all talked here before, well, they've changed, with motorists driving way over the posted speed limits, texting while driving, talking, and holding cell phones, and not paying attention to traffic lights. Many are zooming through yellows to beat the red, or often it's already red. And it seems like drivers feel that if they have been waiting for a light for a left turn lane, they have a right to go, even if the light has already changed. Speeders are all over throughout our neighborhood streets, and shockingly, even the streets that the speeders live on. And that's just a real head shaker. You live here, and you speed in your own neighborhood. The town council has been working on traffic calming devices and has installed many radar speed signs, which have been proven to change the habits of drivers over time. They're not the answer, only one tool to use. We see evidence of them working, and we should consider the purchase of additional signs soon. We are in the process of installing speed humps in various neighborhoods. These are again designed to calm traffic and make drivers slow down to maneuver over the humps. Study after study demonstrate that drivers respond to speed feedback by slowing down and driving more safely. They are temporarily installed and must be removed during the winter months to allow snowplows to clear snow-covered streets. Again, not the answer, but another tool for us to use. We all see that better street configurations, properly timed signals, and right turn lanes can assist. The town has placed stop signs here and there, but these signs are not intended to really slow down traffic, and some are placed to appease residents rather than based on real traffic studies. So what do we do? Our traffic woes need more than a patchy approach to calm traffic. We hear how drivers may not like roundabouts, but they seem to be working in many other areas, some better than others. But do we really have the tools to determine our next steps? I am suggesting and asking for a motion to do a traffic study in town that would include a plan for the town council to consider making improvements in our traffic flow. Like our comprehensive master plan currently underway, this plan can be prioritized to allow the town to concentrate on the worst areas of town first to gain relief. Knowing where the stop signs are needed, signals, turn lanes, and even street markings to help drivers could all make a big difference. I ask for a motion and a vote on starting a process of a request for proposals for a townwide traffic study, and ask that we pay for the study utilizing the American Rescue Plan funding, since this study and subsequent actions will assist all Maryville residents and visitors in town. May I have a motion, please?
Sell move.
Second.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Yuzlak and Mr. White for the second. Open for discussion.
One thing, Mr. President, I was going down Broadway yesterday. Stopped at the stoplight at 57th and Broadway, and both six cars ran the red light, not the yellow light. A couple ran the yellow light, but six ran the red light, and they didn't even slow down. So, I mean, you know, that's the mentality of people now. They, you know, light turns red. Fortunately, nobody was waiting to go to come out on 57th Avenue. Otherwise, we'd probably still be there cleaning up the mess.
Well, it is the same on Whitcomb Street. We have a stop sign, they just go right through it, right by the apartment buildings. And the school bus will pull up, put the sign out to stop, and people will actually go around it, not stopping. And they're not supposed to.
Well, one question for the chief, and maybe it's a council decision and/or police commission decision. I think the commissioners have already left. Costa, no warning. You run a red light, you run a stop sign, it's an automatic ticket. We're not going to hem and haw, and do we need to send a message to everybody via our officers with our backing, backing you guys up? This is, Joe, I turn to you, I mean, can we, you know, advise the police commission and the officers to make a policy statement that there's going to be no more warnings? Quite frankly, there shouldn't be any more warnings on a lot of things in town. High grass, blight, weeds, what have you. If we're going to maintain property values and take care of this town, we give somebody a warning, a lot of them probably ignore it.
Hold on, you're talking about two classifications.
Right.
First of all, on the speed tickets, if I may speak that in chief, I think it's an officer's call at the end of the day when they're on the field, if they're going to give a warning or if they're going to give a ticket. So that's their call. I mean, if the chief wanted to dictate some type of order or memo to his officers, then no more warnings will be issued. I mean, he could do that if he wanted to, or a police commission. But at the end of the day, that's a policy call on their end. On weeds and snarkious weeds and such, we're required under statute to give notice regarding those, to abate those nuisances. If they don't, then we take certain lien rights in the property. So two different matters, but two that are affecting the town that we need to deal with on a daily basis.
And just to comment off what you said, Sean, in my opinion, this traffic has... It's not only in our town, it's everywhere, of course. But I think the problem is bigger than what we've talked about already. As the president read, you know, we're doing speed humps, we're doing speed signs, we're doing stop signs, and those are all just tools. And I hate to say this about the police department, but issuing speeding tickets and warnings are also just tools. I think this is far beyond trying to put more work on them or trying to put more tools in the street. We need to find out what the overall picture is and what the main... I mean, we're not going to solve all here, there's no way you're going to solve all. But I think we need to find out how we're going to slow the majority of our residents down is the main thing. And I agree with the president, and I think we need to overall study and see where our main problems are, where our main arteries are, and how we take care of them.
Chief, anything to add to this discussion?
No, we've been having special grants, we've had the school bus traffic arm and the stop arm grants that we've had where officers are out there, and a lot of them have been charged with traffic misdemeanors on that. We've also been... We just had a recent grant for speeding where officers are out. So officers are out, are writing tickets, and a lot of those grants you have to write, you know, X amount of tickets per X amount of hours and X amount of contacts. So it is happening. It's just, I don't think there is a simple solution for this. I don't have an answer, I can't just...
And I think added to the traffic, whatever you want to call it, our town's getting bigger. Our town's getting huge. We've got a huge influx of people moving to our town from other states, from other cities, from other towns. We've got these giant warehouses in town. We got Amazon trucks going up and down Broadway where it's only just a one-way either way. And people are getting aggravated. I can't take Broadway anymore, I used to go that way every day. Now I got to zigzag around, you can go this way, I got to zigzag around that, and they're driving angry. So I think a traffic study will help show where we can relieve congestion, where we can make, you know, streets bigger, make streets curvier or whatever there. But it's a big problem, and I think it's more than just the tools that we're using.
One thing I've noticed is that, you know, cars are queuing up to do a left turn lane. Then you get the green arrow, but the arrow's only on for so long and allows, you know, three or four vehicles to go through, and the long line of 12 cars that were waiting, they can't make the light. It almost seems unfair to the other eight who are waiting, you know? So that's part of the study too, is how long should the arrow be on? And can those be adjusted for different times of the day so that they are longer during heavier traffic times?
Well, that's part of the discussion. That's part of the discussion Steve and I had with Butler Fairman at 30 in Mississippi. They made improvements. The state came in and made improvements two, three years ago. It's still operating at a level F, and just like school grades, folks, an F is bad. You want to be operating at a level of A or B or C, and 30 in Mississippi is not doing it, and they pumped money into it. They tried to fix it, and it still didn't work because of the amount of traffic.
Anything else under discussion?
When do you want those due, Mr. President?
Well, I think I was going to call on Steve to help us put together the request for proposals, right?
Yep.
And we'll get those out to engineering firms that we know, post it, let's get it out. I would say within the next 30 days, we should get responses back. And we have to move forward.
Yeah, well, Matt and I, we'll get an RFP together.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you all. Tonight, under announcements, I'm sorry, public comment. Is there any public comment this evening? If there is, please approach the podium, state your name and address for our record, and we allow three minutes for comments.
Hi, my name is Ivy Wiltshire. My address is 3073 West 73rd Place in Maryville, Indiana. I'm here today to express my deep concern and disappointment regarding the recent construction project in my neighborhood. The lack of effective communication from the city has resulted in significant damage to my property and safety concerns that have greatly inconvenienced me and my family. As someone who has always taken pride in being part of a vibrant community, I believe that open and transparent communication between the city and its residents is crucial to maintaining the harmony and well-being of our neighborhood. However, the ongoing construction has revealed a significant lapse in communication that has directly affected my property and the quality of life. The construction activities have caused destruction of my driveway, rendering it unusable and creating a major hindrance in my daily routine. Moreover, the resulting unsafe parking conditions in the vicinity have further escalated the inconvenience for both myself and my neighbors. Additionally, the construction process led to a down wire on my property posing a serious safety hazard that has not been anticipated. While I understand that construction projects are essential for the development of our city, I firmly believe that residents should not bear the burden of inadequate communication and resulting damages. I'm seeking a resolution to address the following matters. First, compensation for driveway repair. The destruction of my driveway has created an unexpected financial burden that I wasn't prepared for. While the city has come in and repaired the bottom part of the driveway that they used to dig out for the ditch and the Kaiser drains, the rest of the driveway pavement was broken up when they went down, and it just doesn't look good at all. I'm kindly requesting compensation from the city to cover the cost for repairing the remaining of the driveway and restoring it to the same condition as the bottom part. Secondly, resolution for inconvenience. The inconvenience caused by the construction and its aftermath has disrupted me and my family's daily routine. I request a clear pan from the city to address the parking issues, ensuring safe and accessible parking for residents, including myself, while the construction is ongoing. I kindly urge the city to take immediate action to address these concerns. It is my hope that the city acknowledges its responsibility in this matter and takes steps to ensure that such communication laps do not occur in the future. Additionally, I would appreciate the opportunity to address these concerns with you all here to figure out if we can come up with a resolution. Thank you all for your attention to this matter.
I brought your email up at the beginning of the meeting, Mrs. Wiltshire. We had talked yesterday on the phone, am I correct?
We did.
Yes, and I brought up the whole situation today. From my knowledge and from what I understand, I believe Matt Lake was out there talking to you today.
No, I was at... I'm a teacher, so I didn't get off work until four o'clock.
Okay.
So I did not talk with him today on the property.
Well, it was brought up to me by someone here, that Matt... Was it you, Steve, that Matt Lake was out there today?
I know he did a side visit this morning at 11:00 a.m. I'm not sure who he talked to, but I know he was out there this morning.
Yeah, he was.
Okay, it was Rick then that brought it up? And what was his conclusion, Rick, from Matt Lake?
He said that they're actually paving the street tomorrow?
Well, I don't know what the timeline is on what's going on, and that's the reason why I'm here today. I have had conversation with them, with Matt Lake, about apologizing for inconveniences, but I still haven't got a clear response as to what's going to be done to the street. Because I've had to park, you know, different places, I stay right on 73rd. So I'm just trying to get an understanding, because I have an eight-year-old son, and taking him across the street when we get home from work and stuff is not safe. And then when they were doing the work, the cement truck knocked down a pole, and we had a power outage, and all those wires on my property hanging across...
Did they get those wires?
No, the wires are still hanging over my son's basketball.
Someone told me the wires were picked up.
No, they're not. The wires are still there. He can't even jump on his trampoline.
Oh, goodness.
So, and no one notified me or communicated with me if those were live wires or anything. They just left the wires.
They're dead wires, yeah.
And this is going on a week, but no one told me they were dead wires, so we just...
All we can do is talk to the contractors and the companies. So that's not a town project, what you're referring to? None of that was anything to do with the town?
But then you guys hired the construction workers to do the work?
No, it's a NIPSCO project.
Okay.
Yeah.
But while it's a NIPSCO project, the cement truck is responsible for knocking down the electricity pole. So that's the start of the issue. They were pouring down concrete, which broke up my driveway, knocked down the electricity pole, left wires, and no one communicated with me on what was supposed to be done.
Right.
And that's why I'm here today.
Well, I believe Matt Lake or someone responsible for all of this should have a connection with NIPSCO and try to come to a solution. Because besides Mrs. Wiltshire, I had other calls out there. And you're on the street of the dead end where there's no light, you have to park your car.
And I'm the only property there on the corner.
On the corner.
That's most affected. All the other homes right there where the ditch is, they haven't been impacted. All the work is being done right on my property. So this has been going on since May. It all started in May, and then they took a break for whatever reason, started back up in June, left heavy equipment out there. I mean, there's bulldozers all... My son can't even walk to the park. And then they stopped working again in June and started back up in July, and then left all of this, you know, ruckus for me and my family to try to sort out with no communication.
Well, you noticed that they did remove the equipment from the park there. They had a lot parked into the park, which I believe is right next door to you.
Yes, it is.
Okay, they had a lot of equipment there, including the chemicals, I would say barrels of different types of chemicals. Well, after talking to someone involved with one of the conservancies, they made sure that was removed so the kids could play in the park over there. Now, as far as these other problems, I believe NIPSCO should be contacted immediately. Am I correct, Mr. Bella? And maybe get the solution solved?
Yes, yes, I agree. As far as I know, that's been done.
Well, we're not 100% sure that the wires that's down are NIPSCO's, because I have been in contact with Mike Lake, and the last conversation we had, they're not sure if they're NIPSCO or some type of telephone company, because we don't have a landline phone. But the wires are hanging from my home, across my property, hanging over the basketball court or whatever, to another pole on the other side of, you know, the property, so it's not clear.
Don't touch the wires, we have no idea what they are. But Steve, let's get you and Matt out there tomorrow morning and see what's going on, contact the appropriate utilities and tell them to get this cleaned up.
And how about the driveway? I know that was another one of my concerns. When the construction workers came in to put these drains in, they broke up the concrete in my driveway. And now the remaining part of my driveway is like the part that's moving, and the rest is all chiseled up. So what, you know?
Well, did they do the apron of the driveway, the bottom part?
That is complete, yes.
That is with concrete on top of it, not just rock?
Yeah, but it's still...
Is it drivable then? Can you drive on it?
No one gave me any communication that I can drive on it, so... But I've been driving on it, so... I just started driving on it today, because I was like, you know, looks good, so...
Steve, it looks like it's old cables, cable lines.
Yes, I think so.
Cable, yeah.
Well, Steve, you could get out there tomorrow morning, maybe?
It'll be sometime, as soon as I can get there. It'll be sometime tomorrow.
Be completed there?
I'll get with Matt tomorrow and we'll...
Okay.
Now Ivy, did you talk to the construction fellows that were there about redoing your driveway? That you would pay for that, like trying to get a quote from those concrete folks?
I did try talking with the folks out there. Once I saw them digging up things, and he told me that there was a union job and that he'll come back and give me a quote on some work that they can do, I guess, outside of the work.
Okay, right.
So... But at the same time, you know, I'm just looking to see if there's any resources, you know, to help me get the rest of that done due to the inconvenience that this project has caused.
Now, Matt had mentioned to me also that he explained to you the ARP program we're doing right now with improvements to homeowners' properties. Are you familiar with that program?
I'm not familiar with it, but he's going to send me an email to look into it.
Okay.
So I can start there.
Perfect, okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for all your hassle with all that.
Sabina Miller, 3120 West 75th Place. So first of all, I want to say that Ivy is a neighbor of mine, and I have been watching what's been happening at her property since May, because I happen to drive by there all the time. And I also want to let you know, when you're going past Ivy's property, Ivy has invested heavily into her property, making it nicer, putting new siding up, all kinds of stuff. So she has worked very hard on making this beautiful. She was even exploring buying the lot next door that was evidently for sale from Stormwater or somebody. And she wanted to make this even a bigger, nicer place. Ivy was most definitely, and I see all the other crossings as well, more impacted than any other resident. So the complaint she has is really about communication. Now, when I look at it, over the last few years, I build a relationship with Matt Lake. When this project started, he came to my house. He actually called me out, and he said, "There was a change of scope." So as we change this out, let me tell you exactly what's going to happen here and what we're going to do here, because you're not getting a new culvert, you're getting something else. So it would have been really cool if the people that were personally directly impacted had had such a visit to just explain to them. Ivy, the reason why she didn't know what the delay was was because I came to the town council meeting, and I heard you guys talk about, and Matt talking about the NIPSCO lines and the AT&amp;T lines, and they had to come in and move them and all this stuff. Ivy, in the meantime, didn't know why the delay was going to happen. I think if we have residents directly impacted by construction, we shouldn't wait for NIPSCO or anybody else to send somebody by. And I don't think the culverts are really a NIPSCO project. I think that's really a town of Maryville Stormwater Department project. And I feel that the directly impacted tenants or residents should have been talked with about what's planned and what's going to happen. And if there is a delay, and hey, we won't be able to pick it up probably for another month. It's really unnerving watching her part of the street and going by, and it's almost always barricaded, and she has to maneuver around it. And there's dirt everywhere and gravel everywhere, and it was all busted up. So I just want to let you know, that's the kind of tenant or the kind of residents, resident Ivy and her family are. They're very neat and very tidy, and they were really upset about it, and I can understand that. The other part I wanted to hone in on is the letter you wrote about the speeding. I can wholeheartedly, you know, support what you're doing and that you're asking for a study. No amount of stop signs, though, will stop people. I mean, just today, I was out in my garden, and there is a lady out of my subdivision was speeding by, one stop sign, second stop sign, go entertaining, third stop sign. She didn't even... She didn't even slow down. Nobody cares about stop signs in this town, or next to nobody. So hopefully that study brings something up. Another item I wanted to raise also on this was, there are people literally on Facebook when we talk about, hey, look, there are speed bumps going in, and yes, we're only getting one per ward right now, and we're gonna study those. There are people that come out very upset, saying, "How dare you, you know? You're impairing our ability to drive, and, you know, we shouldn't have speed bumps. We should be able to do what we want." And so these people, I don't think, unless you really ticket them. And that's why I agree with Mr. Pettit here. I think we need to hit them hard if they are totally oblivious of what the rules of the road are. I mean, that's just not appropriate.
Finish up Sabine, please.
Yep. And, well, really, I just wanna thank Mr. Sweattinoff for, uh, mentioning about the mold cleanup. Um, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Masarch, two oh one, East Sixty-Eighth Place. Currents, the Kiwanis are gonna be at Curtis Park at eleven AM.
Excuse me?
Eleven AM. So anyone who wants to come to Curtis Park, we are putting a bench there. Perhaps in the future, we can, uh, have the Parks Department have enough funding to put benches in with the new park equipment. As far as traffic and whatnot goes, you, you, I'll save you guys a lot of money. Hire me for the traffic studies. I've come to these council meetings. I've listened to them. You're not gonna do anything on Broadway, US Thirty, or Taff Street, because those are state highways. You have no control over the stoplights, so what are you gonna do? I've watched council argue about whether the police should or should not stop, or where the money goes, or the profit, or whatever. We obviously, this ties into communication, don't have very good communication with the Indiana Department of Transportation and a, a good enough relationship where we can work with them on the state highways. As far as the other roads, when you have Mississippi as a forward lane, and Wicklawn is also a forward lane, people will drive like it's a raceway. Narrow it. Maryville has no bike lanes, put some curbs in. But when you have narrow roads, it's natural for people to drive slower. It's way, it works way better than speed bumps. It's something to try. As far as, uh, the traffic circles, the roundabouts, that is all based on narrowing of traffic. Something to ponder. But the thing of it is, is we can't act like we don't know where the traffic problems are coming from. We're building warehouses, and we're becoming industry, and we're building all these jobs. We're building apartment buildings. We're creating our own problems without planning. The police department doesn't have enough officers to write enough tickets to make people care. We need to take that into consideration. When we're growing, we need to start thinking about all of the things in the big picture. But a number of you spoke tonight, and you said Ward Six, or my ward, or that ward. We need to start thinking about Maryville as a town, one unit, working together as a team, making it better for everybody. We wanna, we have an ordinance that's gonna fine people for twenty-five hundred dollars if people have a bad property. I, I'll tell you a bad property in my Ward Six. It sits right over there. It's an eyesore. You can see it from I sixty-five. How about we start fining the White family, or whoever owns where the Radisson was, twenty-five hundred dollars a day, and maybe it might get cleaned up? Why don't we get NIPSCO on the phone and tell them, hey, you're construction people. We don't care whose the problem is. Uh, you're gonna start getting twenty-five hundred dollars a day per lot. Fine, you know, when they start racking up, uh, a hundred thousand dollar fine in a couple of weeks, they'll, they'll fix the problem. But we don't even have the, the, the relationships where we could just get someone on the phone and say, before we're all in the legal world, hey, we got a problem. Hey, Amazon, can you stop cutting through Mr. So-and-so's driveway? It's not a street. He made, he made it look real nice, but that's not his fault. He's just trying to improve his property value.
He's finished up, Ryan?
We need that. That's something that you should consider. We don't need traffic studies. It's common sense.
You guys can come up and like queue up, that way you're ready to go next, okay?
Shonda Flowers, sixty-one thirty-seven Connecticut Street. Um, I just wanted to make a suggestion. Maybe, um, is it possible? Because you hear about the speeding in the town, and it's, it amazes me that when, um, coming to work in the morning, how many people fly past the actual police department? It's like, you, everyone knows that the police department is right here, and they fly past. Is there any way possible, especially with the parking lot being painted, we have extra vehicles? Maybe we can mount some of those vehicles up front, possibly, um, during the high-traffic times? Maybe that center lane, uh, which is the turning lane in certain sections, you have some police officers that's sitting there with their lights, because the minute they see the lights or the, the cars posted, people do slow down immediately because they don't know. Um, it may be interesting if maybe, um, an officer that is sitting just outside, uh, or that may be at the desk due to injury or something to that extent on desk duty. Maybe in the morning time, if they are sitting up front, maybe they can radio an officer in the area to just say, hey, this is the car, this is what, you know, they have the guns to possibly clock them, to see, to help deter. I know, um, back in the day when I didn't live in Maryville, one of the things that you knew when you came into Maryville was right at CVS, um, in that plaza, um, where you had officers that were just sitting there. It set the tone when you first came in. Gary and Officer Buck, um, were pivotal when it came to coming off of Sixty-first. Soon as you got off of Sixty-first, even if you were in highway mode, when you came off onto that exit, you knew because those officers were just sitting right there in the center, not that they could sit there, but maybe doing some of the studies or the high-traffic areas or during the time when things are hectic and people are rushing, mornings, lunch, um, in the evening time. But that could possibly be a probable solution. If they see the presence, maybe they'll slow down. Oh, and then also too, um, no, I'll, I'll save that for.
Pamela Thompson, uh, fifteen ninety-nine fifty-sixth Place. Um, I, mine is, I guess, too traffic-related, because I live right there, by the entrance of the Isaac Walton, uh, gun range there. I've, I've been there since oh eight, um, but in the last five years, my house has been rented to three times. Two times was a drunk driver. One time was a kid, uh, joyriding. I guess he wasn't familiar with the road. The first time, uh, if I hadn't got up to go use the bathroom, I would've been dead. The second time, my, um, boyfriend was in the, um, other room. The car came in on him. This third time just happened last week. Luckily, it didn't hit the house, but it did tear up my fence. I've asked for a, uh, steel barrier or something to be put there. All I got was a, a sign to direct the traffic. Drunk drivers aren't looking at signs.
What's your address again, ma'am?
Fifteen ninety-nine fifty-sixth Place.
Thank you.
All I'm asking for is a steel barrier, um, some pole, um, steel, or something. Each time I had to live in a hotel for three months with my family. So I'm just asking for some help.
I believe, we've spoke before. It's probably been a couple of years ago.
Oh, that was you? I couldn't remember. I know I spoke to somebody.
It, it's been at least two years ago that.
That one was in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, we did put up that, that signage. You haven't had any problems until just recently.
Yeah, he molded that sign down like it wasn't even there.
Okay.
So those signs, they let, they, they're good for people to let them know. But when you're drunk, a sign is not gonna stop a car.
If you're impaired and you're going at a high rate of speed.
And this last guy, he totaled his car. I honestly don't know if he's alive. I don't. They pulled him out, and they said they had to airlift him somewhere. I don't know if he's alive.
Yeah, cuz I think last time we had talked, somebody had run into the house.
Yes.
So, yeah, I remember that.
We'll take another look, ma'am.
Yep.
Thank you.
Am I allowed to approach the council and handle these packets, please? Hope I made enough, if I didn't, you know?
Well, there's seven of us.
Good evening.
Okay.
My name's Chris Holson. I live at eight hundred West Seventy-third Avenue. I must tell you, this is a very hot-button topic in our neighborhood.
Thanks.
We're all from Turkey Creek. I've been a resident of Turkey Creek since nineteen ninety-seven. Located at eight hundred West Seventy-third Avenue, adjacent to the Turkey Creek entrance. Over the years, I've tried to keep up the entrance to Turkey Creek, but it hasn't been easy. While trying to obtain this, I even had to pay for a window of a vehicle that my, my tremor flashed up a, a rock and shattered his window. I had to pay for that out of pocket, maintaining that parcel. I've rubbed elbows with many neighbors over the years, trying to keep up, keep it up, while every single person would tell me that they were tired of looking at the weeds and the, how it was not up kept. So much that they had to do something about it. Over time, the parcel was run over by drunk drivers, and the Great Stock Trail sign was taken down as well. So destroyed that all the, all that remained was a boulder and broken poles from where the signs once were, weeds and a boulder. That's when I met my friend LaShawn here. Together, we took some ownership of this parcel. We started clearing all the weeds. We took rotary hammers and took two and a half feet of concrete out so that these poles that were sick and standing above ground, jagged edges, would not hurt anybody. That was a liability, folks. And at that time, we'd reached out to Jeff at some point. No response. Public Works, they just said, "Go talk to Jeff." No one would help us, folks. No one. So let's fast forward just to August of last year. Miss E here found a helping ear in Pat Riordan. She set up a meeting in my garage at August twenty-seventh. Uh, in attendance was Pat, Jeff, and Sheila Shine. Sheila was a tough cookie. She grilled us pretty good on our, on our commitment to, to this unit. Because Pat and Jeff, they made a verbal agreement with us. We went in a verbal agreement with the town of Maryville that this parcel, the walls that now stand in the medium of Seventy-third and Van Buren, that we would maintain the, this as long as the town funded it. And by the way, we've kept up our end of the bargain. We've not only clean, kept it clean, we also take care of the Eddings property that they don't trim. We clean up all the trash. It looks pretty good, doesn't it, guys? It, it makes, there's a big difference there now. So the reason we're here is because we have found out that, uh, there was a meeting with, um, the landscaper, Maple Grove landscapers, to remove our walls. We violently disagree with that. Bear with me. I'm not a very good public speaker. But when they were completed with that project, we were so happy. We fed the workers. We let them use the electricity in our house to finish their work. Part of this meeting that we had on August twenty-seventh, we asked, well, there was many topics talked about. And Pat and Jeff said, "What would you like?" One of the first things that came out of our mouth is, we said, "Whatever's done with this parcel, it has to be protected, because it has been run over so many times. Whatever has to happen. It has to have lighting, and it has to be sustainable, something that we could easily take care of." So now let's fast forward to the project. Early November of twenty twenty-two, the structure was completed. It was beautiful. It was marvelous. I would get so many wonderful comments in the neighborhood. It was incredible. People were proud once again of Turkey Creek. November eighteenth, it got clipped. Maple Grove came out, fixed it for, at no cost. In that packet, there's a conversation from December seventh, when it got hit by someone who was not paying attention. They were on their phone. Immediately, I sent this text out to Pat, explained what happened. And once again, we talked about barriers. Still nothing happened, folks. And then, there's other pictures on there from January thirtieth, when someone completely just took down the right-hand side. The police were called. There was an accident report, um, on file. There was, there's a picture of the vehicle and a picture of the license plate. This was sent to Pat Riordan immediately. I believe it was seven forty-seven that night. No response. Why didn't we go after him to restore what he damaged? We had all, all the pieces of the puzzle, but no one went after him. So after that, the next event was April twenty-first. We finally received our light. It's a beautiful light. There's a picture of it there. Almost six months after we started our project, we finally got something where people could see the intersection clearly. And since then, no one has touched that intersection, not, not even close. So why are we taking, why are we taking this down? There's been a meeting with Maple, uh, Maple Grove landscapers, and, uh, from my understanding, the decision was to be made tonight on when it was coming down. We turned it around, and we invested all this money, the time, to beautify our neighborhood, and now we're gonna take it down because of some reckless drivers. And Mr. Bella, I agree with you. I, I don't know how to fix the behavior of these people, the way they drive.
Right.
I don't think we can ever do that. But this, this, this beautiful structure, although it's been hit, it protects the neighborhood. It protects the children as they're going to school in the morning from people driving recklessly, cuz they cannot drive quickly through this neighborhood anymore. As that person hit that corner as bad as it was, it's a good thing they hit it, because at the rate of speed they, they hit it, by the way, their vehicle had to be towed. It, their radiator was pushed, their family was pushed all the way in. That could've been a head-on collision with something coming the other way. It could've saved somebody that night. And now we're gonna take down something that is so vital to our, our community? It brings pride. It brings safety to our neighborhood. I don't understand it. It's not a liability.
There's been no decision to remove anything. It just, I don't know where you, where you heard that or where that's coming from, but.
Steve, would you like to talk about that?
I have no knowledge of that, so. With the light there now, we should probably fix it and see how it works out.
I called personally and talked to the landscaper.
Okay.
Cuz we found out that they were out there to look at the project. We thought we were getting our sign. We thought we were getting our sign, flowers, everything that we asked for. To discover that, they were told that they were there to get an estimate for the town to take it down. They were waiting on a vote from you guys. And Steve was to get back with them to take down the structure. And I explained to them that we, as residents, wanted that and we will fight to keep it up. And not only learning all this, do you know that that is a historical landmark?
The Great Sock Trail.
Yeah, of course.
Which includes my house as being part of that historical area. And that searched me as a resident to go and look under the ordinances of Maryville, which I also included in that. I didn't put every page that I pulled up, but now I have questions. Now, I want to meet with the attorney. I like to meet with any of you guys that are willing to meet with me because this states right here in section fifteen fifty-one, purposes of her historical preservation. We've asked for that to be protected. We've lived there for twenty-seven years. No matter if you flatten it, put a bubble in it, a curve, they're reckless. Then, when we met with Jeff, he told us that's a drivable medium. The last time I checked, when I went to Driver's Edge, when you drive over mediums, you're either drunk or nothing was ever drivable. And I like to know where I stand as a homeowner, being part of history. How do we preserve that? To keep the beauty there. We've asked for this for a very long time and not for it to be taken down. What can we do as Turkey Creek residents to beautify our neighborhood?
Jeff, did you want to respond?
Yeah, I'm gonna give everybody a chance to speak first and then I'll-
Well, actually, I let the gentleman, I gave him all the time because he was way over his three minutes, assuming that you were just there as a support. So-
Is it okay if I say something, President Bell?
Oh, go ahead, Mrs. Neil. Sure.
So, first of all, I just want to commend you and say thank you because you're the type of residents that we do want in our community to, that want to see the beautification, to come in our community. I actually met this family because, two years after they moved into the neighborhood, we moved into the neighborhood and I met them because me and my husband would walk around the corner with all of our utensils and tools and clean up all the weeds on our hands and knees and sweep to make sure that when people drove into our subdivision, it looked very, very good. So, I know they have been there. I know what they've done. I've seen what they've done. I'm looking at the pictures going, oh, yep. I know, yeah, they were there. And to see, when I saw that they had built this into the subdivision, I thought it was very beautiful. The only way we're gonna continue to get residents to move into our neighborhoods that care is to have residents there that care.
Sure.
They're setting an example. The people that are here with them, are you all residents?
Yes.
Who are there with them, they were not in the neighborhood when I was there, but you see they're bringing in more neighbors because neighbors are saying, "Oh, if I live here, this is what we do." And that's how we kept it up when we were there. Neighbors saw us out there and they would just come and help. So we would just get out there and just do it. So I hope there is gonna be a resolution for this. I would love to see it up and looking very beautiful. Love to see the sign even back up, put back up there. But for ten years, we did maintain that area and it was a very beautiful area. So thank you all for being such dedicated citizens to our community for such a long time.
And thank you. We pulled a few weeds together, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
But I also had another thought. Currently, the Great Sock Trail sign is sitting in front of the historical museum. It's safe there. I understand. I had been working with Downstate, trying to get it put back to its original position. It's just not possible. Someone's just gonna destroy it again, but I can't believe I didn't think about this sooner. It can go between the sidewalk and the road and my house. It would be an honor to have that sitting at eight hundred West Seventy-third Avenue. It's time to bring it home, folks. That's where it belongs. Let's bring it home and let's set it where the whole community can once again be proud of it. And I'd like to also say this. I don't know Frank's last name, but Frank's been there since nineteen sixty-eight. And he saw me outside one day and, bless his soul, he was picking up some of the rubble. I don't know how he did it, but it was amazing. And once again, he asked me about the sign. And I didn't have good news for him and honestly, it kind of broke my heart. That sign is a reflection of his time living in the community. That's part of his identity. That's part of a lot of people's identity, the Great Sock Trail. As a matter of fact, Miss E., would you like to tell the story about how it brought you into town?
Hello, I'm from Michigan and where I'm from is a very quiet neighborhood. We decided to move here like nine years ago, so our real estate went around looking for different places. Well, I happened to see the sign. The sign brought warmth. It brought neighborly to me. It made me feel like I would be somewhere safe because in Michigan, you're used to just leaving your doors unlocked. So I said, "I want to go in this neighborhood because this looks very neighborly and very happy and safe." So when I saw that sign, I said, "I've got a house." Actually, right around the school, Iden School, so I'm right around the corner. And I felt good. I felt safe. I felt the neighbors and everything. I just felt good about it and I just felt like that was a good neighborhood coming from Michigan. Because I didn't want to go to Chicago. I just wanted to be on the borderline. So once we got there, it was just feeling so good. But when the sign came down, someone knocked it down from driving or whatever, I kind of was sad about it. And I happened to, with Chris, he kept saying he wanted the sign back and I was like, "Well, you know what? After so many years of him fighting for the sign, I said, "Listen, I'm gonna go down there and I'm gonna talk to someone about it." So I went down here and I met Pat and I talked to Pat. I told him where I'm from and how that sign made me feel. Pat got on it right away and we all had that meeting that he's talking about, trying to fight to get the sign. But at the end of the day, was told that we couldn't get the sign, so we decided to try something different, which was the Iden Island, and then was gonna do another sign. So I'm just here to tell you guys how it made me feel coming from Michigan. And we've been here nine years now.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I make a comment to-
Can we let Jeff speak?
Okay. All right, let's see if we can come up with some kind of resolution here. I grew up a half a block away from this sign and where this new structure is. I've been there since the third grade, man, so that thing's been a part of my life forever. When I was first contacted last August about this project, I came over to your house and met with you guys. I was super excited about it, and I still am. Of course, we had the four accidents. Of course, I was miserable. I'm like, you know, I can't believe this is going on. These seemed like they were all sporadic right away. And then we got the light. I know I met with everybody last night. We had a meeting right here. And there was one key point that came up is, ever since we had the light, there's been zero accidents. So that's good. What I want to, excuse me, I can't even talk, I'm so excited about the one project. What I would say we do is this. For right now, we're not gonna tear it down. Let's leave it as is. I say we leave it as is, give it another, because it's been, what, three months roughly since there's been no accidents? Let's give it another month or so. Maintain it, see how it goes. I think if we still have zero accidents by fall, I say we go ahead and proceed and finish it.
We still need to protect it, though. We've succeeded with the light. And Steve, I understand you were involved in it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will tell you, I noticed the very day and I sent Pat the nicest message. And I think he copied you on it right away, didn't he, Steve?
Yeah, he did.
That was such a delight to see because that corner is bright and is brilliant.
Well, let's keep it-
But we still need to address how we're going to maintain and keep it safe because this device, this structure we're talking about is twenty-eight and a half feet long. There's eleven feet on each side of the structure that goes to the end of the curb, which is still the same dimensions as it was. There's been no amendment or change to it. So we have plenty of room to turn around and come up with some ideas of how we can protect it from some of this craziness, Mr. Bell, that you're so talking about. We can't completely block it off, but I'm sure we can come up with some type of creative solution. I mean, we're all creative solvers. We're all problem solvers here, folks. Let's solve this problem.
Large decorative boulders.
Again.
Something like that.
Again.
A big speed bump.
Yeah. Oh, no.
Let's maintain it for another month or so, until fall. See how it goes. Because as of right now, we've had no accidents for three months since the light's been installed. The light has made a huge difference. Let's keep this thing illuminated. Steve, get your guys out there within the next week. I want the curb painted yellow because either way, no matter what we do here, that's gonna help. Once that point comes, if we feel we should move forward, which I'm hoping we will, then we'll go ahead and do the repairs at that time. We'll move to the Phase Two as we discussed prior to. Within that time, we will come up with any other options that we feel is safe or unsafe or whatever we need to do in that time.
Mr. President?
I just wanted to remind, I'm sorry, sir, I just want to remind the council that may not have been around and even some of the residents. Maryville's historic district starts at Van Buren, along Seventy-third Avenue and goes all the way to Mississippi Street. And so we identified, we pushed that historic district back because of that sign you folks are referring to. So let's all keep that in mind. Secondly, Mr. Bella, you and I both have planters on Ninety-third Avenue. And they have been hit and they have been destroyed and they have been repaired. And I believe, Steve, we've done that obviously on the town dime.
It's just similar to like-
It's very similar to what we've got, Rick, and I don't see why we can't continue to, I like Jeff's ideas, but if something does happen, it's in our right-of-way. We probably need to fix it.
The only question I have is, with the lighting and everything else, I think it helps and I think it's good to go and I think we're gonna see this thing for a long time. Granted, you can't help what drivers do. You're probably gonna have another accident a couple of years down the road. You just can't help it. My question is, and I hate to ask this, but we gotta throw everything on the table, it'll be to our legal. Since the town built this structure, is there any liability there?
Generally speaking, yeah. Go ahead, Joe.
So we physically own the right-of-way, correct? I'm assuming we own Van Buren. We own Ninety-third Avenue. We put planters on Ninety-third Avenue.
Yep.
And we're gonna put more up on different streets.
Yeah. Trying town beautification.
This is all part of-
I'm gonna put you on the spot, Joe. I mean, if you need time to look it over while we're doing this probationary time, that's fine. I'm coming late to the party here. I want to hear the whole story. I'll sit down with you and talk with you. That's fine. Call me, let me know. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely.
My name is Larry Shadley. I live seventy-two seventy Van Buren Street, right there on the corner. Since the light's been installed, it's been wonderful. It's a lot brighter. The structure can be seen a lot better now. Before the light, it was super dark. That's probably why it was hit four times. However, what I would like to chime in, you guys are talking about liability. If the structure's not there and, like Chris said, somebody plows through there like that guy did, what if that structure's not there and somebody plows through there and hits a kid on the corner? You have more of a liability of that than if the structure's there and the car hits that structure and saves a kid's life. You know, we got a lot of kids on that corner. There's a school there. So, you know, let's also look at liability that way, too. You know, that's a school zone. And we got cars flying down Van Buren. I have to yell on my yard, yelling at people to slow down because they think Van Buren's a drag strip. You know, we're talking, I'd love to see some speed bumps on Van Buren because they think that's US thirty drag strip there. You know, and Seventy-second Street. They use that as a drag strip. I have to yell at people all the time. Speed is horrible through that neighborhood. And it's a school zone, people. And I also want to thank you guys for fixing the street light on the corner of Seventy-second, too, and keeping the lights on at the school. That also brightens it up, too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time today.
I'm a new resident. My name's Ben Compton. I live at seventy-two forty-eight Pierce Street and I just moved in two years ago. But I would just, you know, at the opportunity to beat a dead horse here, the planters on Ninety-third, there's also a similar structure right out in front of this building. A similar brick structure. I mean, a car hits that, like, that's what, I'm no law professional and I will leave it to you on liability. But I don't think there's any liability issues. A drunk driver hits the structure right out here in front of the building and-
The town owns the property that the structure's on. That's the difference.
Right, but the town also owns the property here, correct?
I don't know that, sir. That's why I want more information.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. That's what Jeff made me believe last night, so I'm just going off the information I was given, so.
Like Sheila's gonna be on the GIS tomorrow. Can you pull up this property for me as well, Sheila?
Yes.
Great, and email it over to me, all right? Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
And I want to thank you guys for living up to your promise.
We told you we would. That's why we're here. And for me to live on the corner, that's a barrier for me. As many times there's been accidents, that blocks people from going through my house. You talk about liability? I would go after the town of Maryville.
Okay, thank you all. We'll come up with a resolution here.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
And Steve, let's look into why we can't put the trail sign back up. I want the details on that, too. Why can't we put the trail sign back up? The historic sign?
That's been moved to the museum years ago.
Okay, well, we can move it back.
I didn't touch with the director of landmarks and he will be getting back with me because we want it back home. It's enough where you can put it in the middle of that nice brick building and have it secured.
All right.
Brick building where? What brick building?
Anything further, council? I entertain a motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.